All right, at this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Anson?
Here.
Trustee Doral?
Here.
Trustee Myers?
Here.
Trustee Walsh-Lager?
Here.
Trustee Ludkey?
Here.
Trustee Connor?
Here.
President Fannerstil?
Here. If you'd all rise, remove your caps for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Ludkey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, we have, if we have anybody for public comments, anybody that wants to speak for public comments, you can step towards the podium. If there's more than one, you can kind of wait in line. Please state your name and address.
Okay, Bridget Willer, 621 Ridgeway Drive, Hart Ridge. Yeah, like I was saying to you earlier, I have no confidence in our acting police chief because there's a lot of traffic issues, safety issues, in my neighborhood and around Heartland. And it's like, basically, it's like the Wild West. You know, it's like every time I leave the house, I'm subject to road rage. People are tailgating, they're passing in non-passing zones. It's just a mess. And I don't see the police presence out there, like, I don't think that the police presence is out there the way it should be. Because I've lived here for a while, and they used to have a patrol car over by the entrance to the Ice Age Trail on Maple Avenue, pretty regularly, you know? And I rarely see a patrol car there anymore, you know? Rarely. I had an incident last summer where I was subject to a road rage, and there happened to be a patrol car in my vicinity, and I flagged them down, and I directed him to the car that was, you know, the participant in the road rage. And my concerns were not addressed whatsoever. Not at all. I had three witnesses, I had two witnesses with me, you know, besides myself. And this guy that he was talking to, who was driving the truck, was standing next to him, and he was like, you know, waving his hands around, and the officer was like, he didn't seem to be threatened by it at all, you know? This guy was like 6'4". And then he came over to talk to us, and he had a real aggressive stance. That's what, and he, you know, he was putting his hand on his gun, and he was talking about how people are angry. And I just didn't think it was an appropriate response to the problem that we were having, you know? And, but I think there's a lot of traffic issues in Heartland. Because there's a lot of intersections without lights, and it's just, people are just running amok. It's really dangerous. And that's basically what I have to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak for items that are not on the agenda? Good. First item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve village board minutes of February 24th, 2020 meeting. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $3,588,529.82.
I make a motion to approve the voucher list for $3,588,529.82.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. The next item we have are a consideration of motions related to licenses and permits, first being a bartender's license that expires June 30th, 2020, for Taylor Boblin.
I make the motion to approve the operator bartending license with the term ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that license for Taylor Boblin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? That motion is carried. The next permit that's being requested is by Lake Country Bed Barn. This is for the sidewalk sale. The location is 100 to 200 Pauling Avenue. This is Saturday, August 29th. Setup starts at 8:30 a.m. The event runs from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., and it will be cleaned up by 4 p.m.
Also move to approve the permit?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that street use permit for Lake Country Bed Barn for the annual sidewalk sale. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried, that permit is granted. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to adopt Resolution 03-09-2020, a resolution designating the Village of Heartland Police Chief as Emergency Operations Director.
I move to adopt Resolution 03-09-2020, a resolution designate the Village of Heartland Police Chief as Emergency Operations Director.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 39-2020 to designate the Village Police Chief as Emergency Operations Director. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Our next item is a discussion and consideration of a motion to grant the ability to Kiwanis to proceed with river cleanup projects in the Centennial Park to Hartbrook Park segment through 2020 in coordination with the Department of Public Works. Gentlemen?
Yes.
If you could identify yourselves.
Yeah, Jim Inzenberger, Kiwanis member.
Yeah, Jim Schneeburger, Kiwanis member.
We did submit a letter for your perusal, and just here if you have any particular questions regarding our request.
You had in there for spring, are you planning on doing a fall one again this year, too?
We are looking at, you know, maybe a fall and maybe even next spring, if the necessity arises and, you know, how the progress goes. The main thing here is, our last effort, we had some additional equipment and some additional DPW help, and that went very well. And we were thinking with the nature, now that we're dealing with the properties that are abutting, either in this next phase, the village right away, you know, and the path, which would be the northern section, that having some equipment that is a little easier to operate and somebody who would be very adept at running that equipment so that, you know, we can get in there and be kinder to the adjacent properties. We think that there'd be less chance for damage on any property owner's side.
You have suggestions, is that what you need then for that, or?
So, so last year, the Kiwanis had rented a Mini Excavator, and then we had the Village's Mini Excavator, and then we had a wood chipper as well on the site, you know, at our last event. We would feel that, that maybe just having the Village's Mini Excavator, which actually has a little opposable thumb on it, that allows a little bit more surgical removal, and then the chipper, and then we would keep the second piece of equipment out of there. And again, the one that we rented, you have to have a broader area to kind of tug and pull, and we don't want to be tracking up on people's lawns and such.
That worked out great, it looks really nice.
I mean, everything, everything worked out really well. And so, back to Trustee Drew's question, you know, we may feel that as we progress with the abutting properties to the river, that we might see that that would be a necessity for those other events as well.
Have you had any issues with anybody complaining that looks back?
For the property owners on this next track, I've talked with all but one in person, and they were very supportive of everything that's been going on, and they were very amenable to what we were doing. And so, you know, we haven't had anything in that, of that nature, at least so far.
So, the majority of the work's done all by volunteers, by yourself and your group?
Correct.
And all you're looking for is a wood chipper, you know, a DPW person to help out?
Maybe two.
Maybe two people?
Yeah.
To do that, which is a minimum investment to get the, our main asset going, so.
Yep.
I think it's a great idea.
And I think it's been great. DPW has also just been out there doing some things with, you know, some of the time that they have available, and so I think this has really been a kickstart to a great project here.
Does our DPW have anything to add?
The reason why we want a DPW there and operating it is because of the wood chipper. We just want to minimize any liability and damages. And Jim is right, behind the houses, it is pretty tight, and we would probably prefer our Mini X there, because we have to drop trees, and they have to go through trees on private property. So, we're, I think we're a little well-versed at doing that.
We had a lot of good practice in the other areas, now we're ready to get serious here.
So, I believe what they're asking for is two pieces of equipment and two DPW laborers.
If I could throw something in, because this is, you have to be a board decision, because what I'm about to say is above and beyond. I know last year with having that, I'd actually have to double-check the budget, because I didn't look, but I believe there's $10,000 in there for ECOs, the Environmental Corridor and Open Spaces. I believe there's another $10,000. I believe they used just a little over $7,000 of that last year, and that helped offset the cost. It gets pulled out of that ECOs budget. Instead of it just being the village voting on it, and it's, you know, just coming out of the DPW budget, that I'm wondering if it might not be a good idea to do the same thing as we did last time.
Just to remind you, out of that ECOs budget, that we did rent that Fecan, and that's what chipped the underbrush along the fire department by the river there. So, that was about $3,400.
Okay. Well, and I, and I think we put another $10,000 in for ECOs.
There is, correct.
So, so I was just, I think that'd be, especially since this is open spaces, you know, I think that it'd be a good idea to use that as opposed to just having it be, you know, it's just coming out of DPW budget.
Yep, sure.
But you would have to kind of run those numbers so that it all gets handled properly, and it could get marked, if the board would allow it.
Are we paying the two DPW workers, or is it all volunteer?
Oh, no, they're good. They're not coming in for free.
Okay, but more can come in if they want to volunteer their time, correct?
Yes, we had two other DPW laborers volunteer.
Last year.
Okay, I thought I saw, okay.
Actually, we've had some fire department individuals at, I think last springs.
Some park people.
Mm-hmm, park people.
We need a motion to approve the investment?
I think it would be appropriate, just because then we're all either in agreement or not, and because it's a budget shift. But I, I think once we make the motion, I believe it would be between the hierarchy of DPW showing what those numbers are, and it would be the administrator, if the board was up for doing it that way.
I make a motion that we support the Kiwanis in Greater Heartland in the condition of updating the river, the riverbed.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to, got to look at exactly, to allow Kiwanis to proceed with the river cleanup projects in Centennial Park to Hartbrook Park segment through 2020 in coordination with Department of Public Works. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's looking good. It looks nice. Next item on the agenda, we have discussion and consideration of a motion to approve contractor's application for payment number three for the Crystal Drive lift station modifications in the amount of $4,125.
So, as you recall, the Crystal Lift Station, we had control fails, so what we did, we put in a budget for, it was $196,000. That $196,000 consisted of a building, a generator, and controls for the pumps, the rebuilt pumps. So, this payment number three is for the electrical work done between, so the generator can respond to the control panel during power outages. The village staff and Rook and Melky are satisfied with this electrical portion of the work. We recommend payment to Hogan Electric Incorporated for the sum of $4,125, and that will close out the electrical line item. That's just for the electrical portion.
Also move that we make the payment of $4,125 to the Hogan Electric Company?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the payment of $4,125 for the Crystal Drive Lift Station electrical portion, closing the electrical portion out. Are we, is everything on budget?
It is.
I was just going to ask that.
Discussion, sorry. I should have allotted to the person that made the motion first. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Faulkner. The next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration of actions related to the purchase of the Heartland Inn property at 110 Cottonwood Avenue. Go ahead.
I think very briefly, just to bring this up, so a couple of board members approached and thought this might be an opportunity for the village to get involved and possibly purchase a property. If there's an appetite by the village board, obviously, we would go into a closed session in a future meeting and kind of talk about logistics, if that's something that we wanted to pursue. But right now, it's just an idea out for the board to discuss.
Is this not on the historical list that we have? I forgot to look before I came in.
It is not on the historical property list.
It isn't, I thought it was, okay.
So, it's very similar to the church, where it's an old building, but not on the historic
Yeah, I've had a few residents talk to me about it and inquire, and I think, you know, if she's not going to, you know, do something, obviously, she gets first priority, but if she doesn't, I think it's something that we should consider, like I said, either purchasing, and, you know, that could help us start revitalizing downtown. During the day, it's not as vibrant as it is at night, so we got to think of ways, I think, to bring people down during the day. You know, there's also opportunities to put on, you know, apartment buildings or condos going up, that have more residents down there, so you got more density down there. You know, we can also work with the developer as well, but I think it's something that we should be involved with, you know, as a secondary, if she's not going to reopen.
And I agree with Trustee Connor. It's a great location. We're landlocked here in Heartland, per se, unless we annex, so revitalizing to downtown and, like Trustee Connor said, bringing in maybe apartments or condos for there to get people to live downtown, brings people, you know, more to downtown to shop, to go to the restaurants. It'll help revitalize and keep things busy, especially during the day. If we can get some retail shops in there that are different than the ones that we have now, I think it'd help a lot.
I have a two-part question. In response to your two suggestions, number one, we already have people complaining about parking, and there's really no parking there, unless we put up a parking garage there. But does she, does she currently have this property for, listed somewhere for sale with a sale price? Or is this just an idea we came up with?
At this time, as far as I know, it was requested?
I do not know if it's listed.
Two trustees requested it be on. I don't know, I know the property was on and off the market for sale for the last, if I'm not mistaken, at least four years.
I know, because I looked into it at one point.
Oh, okay, so right now, if it's up, I don't know.
I don't know if it is now.
The village is not, also not aware of what the future, what the current owner of the restaurant and of the business and the current owner of the building, what the future is there, obviously, even though there was a fire there. I don't know if in the setting that we're in, typically, if we started talking about negotiating to buy a building, or any type of building, in any situation, because you don't want to just show all your hands, that's a proper part of negotiation. I think that, if we wanted to do that when that time comes, she hasn't come saying buy it yet, and I don't even know if she ever will. I don't know if she's selling it, I don't know if she's starting the business up again. I know that it's just been kind of in limbo, but I don't think that this would be the proper setting to begin, because whatever price we might get it for, whatever price anybody might get it for, just went up, or could all of a sudden go up, you just don't want to do the negotiating and open.
So, are we positive she's not fixing it, she's not going to reopen?
I just said we don't know. I just said we're positive that we don't know. Does anyone else have anything else on that? I do know that, as far as I know, I know, I believe that Ryan Bailey and our administrator, Rhodey, has been at least in contact, trying to reach out from a village standpoint, just to say what's going on, trying to find out, trying to see what's going on, but not in any way of, of the, you know, doing that. As things happen, you know, obviously, then we'll make more decisions, no matter what that is, if it's that she's selling it to someone, or what, or she's getting it reopened, or, you know, whatever that is.
While we're waiting for all of that, what about the liquor license?
That, that's all part of that. That's all part of that.
Should that be addressed separately, since it's been already passed our ordinance?
You said something like in June, didn't you?
That's not on the agenda, so, I don't know, let's maybe just stay away from that topic for now. If we'd like to add it on to the agenda in a future meeting, we can talk about it.
Also, just considering the history there, I think that, well, it's, yeah, I agree with, I agree with Mr. Rhodey, but that it isn't, it isn't on, so this, especially, and a liquor license is a big thing to talk about, there's public hearings and all kinds of stuff that go with that, so.
Yep, okay.
Does anybody else have anything to talk about that was just the item of the purchase, or?
No, just, just inquiring.
Okay, all right.
And I had a few, like I said, residents that, you know, approached me, so, said I'd bring it up.
Sure.
Yeah, I would, I would say, two presidents comment about the village staff maybe being the ones to have the conversations with Mrs. Marguerite Meyer as to what her future plans are, probably be best at this point. And then if there's an opportunity that she wants to entertain conversation with the village board, I think we should then look at it at that time. Being that it is a longstanding business and part of the community for a while, I think having the village staff actually, I believe that would be best.
Any other, any other points on this? Okay. So, is everybody good with us moving on to the next item on the agenda?
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is a discussion and update related to the parking on East Industrial Drive. Captain Kelsey.
Hi. Stacy Kelsey, Captain of Police. So, the update on, we kept track sporadically throughout all the shifts from February 25th until yesterday. So, every shift would try to make a, an effort to go out there and check on the semis. So, out of all those times checked, 12 of the times, there was no issues with any of the semis parked there. Four of the times, they were parked on the opposite side of the road, and four times, trucks were warned. So, as far as alleviating the blind spot, I think it's done a very good job doing that, and very minor is that, minor times, are there trucks still parking there? I believe several of them, they were parked there, and somebody was still in the truck, so they were easily, easily warned, and they moved on. Well, actually, I think they all moved on. I know there was possibly an issue of some litter that was left behind from the trucks that were unloading there, and I believe the building inspector is sending out, if not already, a letter to the business reminding them that they need to make sure all the litter and all the packaging things are picked up after the trucks are there. Yes?
I had sent some pictures to Scott when I went through there. Did he forward those to you?
I did see those, yes.
Because when I, if you're coming, if you're heading west, and I had a truck parked on both sides, and there was a car coming around the bend, so they could, and I went both ways, so I could tell, when I was heading west, I couldn't see that car coming, and it went right through the middle of the road.
Okay.
But coming from, like, First Bank and coming around that way, you can definitely see it, but, you know, there's no blind spot, but there is from the other end.
And that's if a truck is parked on the west.
And there's one on both sides.
Yes.
There's one on both sides.
Okay.
And then I have another picture where there's one on the south side, and they did the same thing, they went around it, came right into my lane of traffic.
Okay. I, if you, yeah, I mean, if you see it, I hadn't seen, I haven't had any documentation that they were parked on both sides, blocking.
This wasn't in the no parking area, but this was in front of, what's the address of that building?
665.
Yeah, your building.
665.
Yeah, they were parked in front of that building. So, it wasn't at the corner.
Okay.
But it still creates a blind spot for people heading west and then south.
Yeah, the trucks are, depending if they're like 7:00 in the morning or 7:30, I got headlights pointing this way and taillights going that way, and so you're taking a tarp off, folding it up in the middle of the road, and the car's taking a turn. It's an improvement, a big improvement. There's just no room. And, I mean, you're, these tarps are terrible to fold up, and, you know, what's amazing is they, they don't really care if you're, if you want to drive there. You know, they're not jumping out of the way, and, you know, so it's a little bit of a jam up, but the only problem I've really seen is like 7:30, you know, in the morning, you know, that's when everybody sees me going that way, but it's a big improvement. I feel sorry for the business owner, because these are all independent people that are coming up there and delivering stuff, that have nothing to do with them. And it's like, what are you going to do, give them $25? That's not even a gallon of gas, you know, so.
Well, if you're saying 7:30 is kind of more of a problem issue, we can, you know, ask patrol to direct their time and efforts in that, during that timeframe, to monitor.
Earlier in the week, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, not so bad. But it's, it's just not convenient. I mean, as a business person, you want to get that product in there as soon as you can. They're growing too much, we just got to find them another place. Maybe the food's place up here, Myers?
Thanks for checking on all that. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Just wanted to provide an update, I know it's been on the agenda before, and we're continuing to track it, and our building inspector is also working with the property owner, try to find some better solutions, so, just trying to keep everybody updated.
The next item on the agenda is discussion and update on proposed development of lands on Cap and Strive east of Lake Country Lutheran.
So, speaking of keeping everybody updated, again, just an update item, quite the development, put the latest letter from the Newman Group. Single-family condos on the north part, multifamily now, well, as proposed before, multifamily on the middle parcel, and then to be determined, as of now, nothing on the far south, the third parcel. Again, just trying to, they, keep everybody updated, the multifamily now does have a site plan, which is the first time they've come out with kind of their official site plan that they're hoping to go with, with the three different buildings. The condos are a little bit more defined now with total number of units. So, it's progressing along. It is in front of the Plan Commission, so next Monday night will be the second meeting of the rezoning and the second meeting of the PUD documents, so we're going to start working on creating that PUD document. It's slowly coming, I would anticipate sometime in April that it'll be in front of the board, at least for the rezoning to take action, the PUD might be a month or two behind that to follow. But as, as it progresses along, so will the communication, so we just want to make sure the board members who aren't on the Plan Commission are up to date with the current plan, and if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer. We did not ask them to come and attend tonight. We did not ask them to come and attend tonight. Just trying to give everybody some general information.
Thank you, Administrator Rhodey.
Thank you for the update.
So, as hard as it might be able to believe, we're at announcements.
Public Works would like the community to know that we are taking applications for summer help. They have to be 18 years old with a valid driver's license. And we also do a drug screen. But we are taking those applications right now and trying to fill our summer crew early. So, thank you.
What's the best way for people to sign it in? Is it on the website or can they come in and they can drop off?
They can get an application upstairs. They can get it online.
Okay.
They can do either.
Okay, so probably the best way is on the website?
And then they can email them or drop them back off.
Awesome.
Thank you. We have three coming back. We're looking for three more.
Three good people.
Three bodies. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have an announcement for, we have our Citizens Academy starting this Wednesday. Usually, we like to have applications in a little earlier. But we will take anybody else, if any of you guys are interested. If you know anyone who's interested, we have it Wednesday night, starting this Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:30. And it does change location each week because we work with Delafield, Chinigua, Pewaki PDS, and the Lake Country Fire. So anyone interested, please go to our website. And you can email me, contact me if you know anybody or if you guys are interested at all. If you can't make every week, that's okay. We still encourage you to come to learn about the PDS and what we do and how we work with the surrounding agencies.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have an update from the Flag and Door and Post 294, which would be our American Legion, just behind our village building here. It was asked me to share with the community that the Sons of the American Legion Squadron 294 was able to raise and announced that they raised $20,000 at their, it's actually just over $20,000, at their sleep out that they did. And so there's a special thank you to the fire department and the police department and the DPW for your help with that event. For the community to know that $10,000 was donated to the Milwaukee Homeless Veterans Initiative. And $10,000 was donated to the Veterans Outreach of Wisconsin. They also had two large trucks that were full of actual items. And they'll continue to take items if you're interested in dropping things off. And they will get them sent down there as well. So, thank you.
Awesome. Nice job. Fantastic.
Any other announcements? Since our last meeting, anybody else have any announcements? Since our last meeting, people know, I believe it's in the paper, it's been on Facebook. But our former fire chief, Dave Dean, has retired. There was multiple articles that was in the newspaper. So on, myself and the village board wish him the very best in his retirement and the things that he wants to do as he enters into retirement. He was our first full-time chief in Heartland, was part of a large expansion into different services, getting up to paramedic level service, seeing a lot of new apparatus and trucks come in. So we wish him the very best and are extremely thankful for the service and time that he put in. So I just wanted to say that I thought it was appropriate that that would be an announcements that on behalf of myself and the village board, we wish Chief Dave Dean the very best. Your, the current interim chief at this time is, will be interim chief Jambrits. And that's where we are with fire. I don't have any other announcements.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.
Captain.